I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Sherri, would you do the roll call please?
Mayor Nicholson.
Here.
Councilmember Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Durst.
Here.
Espinoza. Martinez.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
Okay. We will start out with the public hearing. Item A is the City of Rawlins and the Board of County Commissioners for the Memorial Hospital of Carbon County Land Trade. Anybody that wants to speak on that matter into the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Sherrod France. I was the president of the Board of Trustees until June of this year and or of nineteen, and I kind of shepherded this through a little bit over that timeframe. Part of this parcel of land was actually transferred over two years ago to the City of Rawlins, and that was about thirty-eight years that was on that road up the hill to the water tank above the old hospital. And anyway, that was done then, and then we just didn't get the thing finalized, so we're here tonight to try and do that. I think it's good for the community, City of Rawlins, Carbon County Commission. It's a win-win thing from the point of view that we see. We were a little surprised that we had to have appraisals on that till we got in the final steps, but actually, when we got there, our thoughts were prior to that, it was a win-win thing because the hospital really could not use that park that was across from the nurses' residence hall. And the parcel that was up there by Tully Park that was adjacent to the hospital would fit in very nicely for us. It helps keep a clear zone for the helipad that we have. In addition to that, it allows further expansion if we have to do something there with the wagon circle clinic, which may be because of codes changed in the health department. So that may be something that we'll need that at some point in the future to build on initially, though I think the intent was is to just get that exchange done. It's beneficial to all parties that we could see. So that's kind of where we're at. That's probably more important to us than anything valuation-wise, because if it's not really usable and beneficial, it's not worth a lot, right? So that's kind of where we come from on that, but I think it would be good for the hospital to be able to have that. From that standpoint, I certainly support that.
Okay.
Have any questions, Sotomayor?
All I got to say is from the time we started this way back then, it wasn't an issue, and we thought it was a good idea to make this trade, and I thought it was pretty much done. It's been a few years we started it, but strongly support it.
Okay, Councilman Smith?
Would we be in order to ask staff to follow up on it and see where we're at and see what we need to do to finish it out?
We're doing that tonight.
Yeah, tonight, okay. That's what's down there, that's what we're doing. Okay, great.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you. The official representatives are Mr. Harmon from the hospital, who's the CEO up there, and Rod Wackerland is the president of the board, so anything officially needs to come from them.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on behalf of that? We'll move on down to Item B, ordinance amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title 19 zoning. Is there anybody that wants to speak on that in the public hearing? Now we'll move on down to citizens' participation. This is the time for any citizen to have five minutes to speak to the council about anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. Go ahead and come up and state your name and sign the paper up there if you would, please.
My name is John Escobal Jr., and I was just coming on behalf, I just kind of wanted to let you know that I'm going to open up your Jerry's Donuts again. It's actually going to be daylight donuts. I know the rumor had been a little bit, I kept it kind of quiet. I've done a lot of stuff underneath the thing without letting everybody know, but formally come to let everybody know it's coming. And...
Congratulations.
And it will be an ice cream shop also, we make all our own ice cream. I'll make it in Riverton, I'll bring it here because I have another store there in Riverton.
Okay.
And I just figured, it's kind of my hometown, that's where I grew up. Yeah, it still lives here, and I figured there's some opportunity here, there's not a lot here. I'm at a point in my life where I can't do it now.
Right.
Give the focus on there.
You have a timeframe when you're going to be open?
I was going to do April 1st, but now that we've had a lot of issues with, you know, I'm going to postpone it a little bit because I had some fun things I was going to do April 1st, but I think I'll just postpone a little bit.
Okay.
Let everybody get through this a little bit, what's happening. As I said, I am in Fremont County, we have some cases in the land area. Hasn't affected me at the store there at all, even though they're not in school. I thought I'd see a lot more kids, and I haven't seen more adults than I have kids. So I don't know if it's the parents leaving the house to get away from each other. But I haven't seen any effects there, and...
Well, that's good.
So as soon as I have a good date, I will definitely let you folks know. I was planning on bringing guys donuts, but it was a busy day, all right? I didn't expect, I mean, I didn't know how this was going to go, play out, so sure, but I will bring them next time I come. Yeah, so the ice cream will come in and all the espresso coffee and all that stuff.
Invite us to your open house, Jerry.
What's that?
Invite us to your open house.
I will, I definitely will. Well, I'm going to try to do a ribbon cutting and everything. Try to, and that's another reason why I'm postponing it, because I'm usually, when I opened my one in Riverton, I did invite like the school, the high school, I wanted them to come, play a few songs at the band. I did the tribal thing over there, I had Indian dancers and then drumming over there because it's tribal land right next door to us. So I want to kind of do the same thing here. I want to make it a big deal and involve all the community in that. I'm going to do my best to do a lot, you know, stuff. I know what happened to Jerry, and I know his health is kind of deteriorated, and that's kind of what's held him up. I've been putting this off since October and September, back and forth on this, just kind of, I just said, let's just do it and just get it done. I got through the holiday season over there, and now I can actually focus. Because I work another job also. I don't just own a donor shop, I do work for a healthcare company also, so, and so I'm on the road a lot with that, so. This, when I do this, I'll be focused on this for a couple months and make sure everything goes smoothly. I'll bring in bakers from the other store here, train the ones the proper way, and we'll see how it goes. Probably going to leave the hours the same Sunday, Monday, it'll be closed for a while. Eventually, it will probably go Sundays. Because I do have a lot of, like church people I have over there, and a lot of them, they come get donuts for church and after church, so eventually that will come also, but I'll just do it five days a week just to get us up and running, and it's proper for you folks and stuff, so. Like I said, next time I come, I'll bring you some donuts. I don't know when you guys have your meetings, if it's once a week or every other week, I don't know here. First and third?
First and third Tuesday.
All right, I'll make it a point to be here.
There you go. Well, we appreciate you coming tonight, and good luck on it.
Oh, yeah, I think we'll have fun, but I'm going to step back because I got to, we'll get some dinner because the first truck is actually showing up tonight. Actually, the merchandise, two made donuts will be here tonight, two thirty, three o'clock in the morning.
So tomorrow.
Tomorrow, but I've been up since four today because I opened the store at five over there.
So tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I just wanted to share. I wish I could make them tomorrow for you, but the product will be in the store. All right, cool. Because I have to order a month out, so it's supposed to be here. Thank you. Hey, we'll have fun. It's going to be fun, and I hope...
That's awesome.
Are you guys right? You guys have any issues or whatever, just contact me at all. I didn't need to bring any cars with me.
You know where we're at.
You can't look me up on the daylight. I do have a Facebook page out of Riverton, Wyoming, and then you can always call the shop in Riverton, Wyoming. Call. And the phone number there is 307-856-6440. If you guys have any other questions or anything for me, or you free call.
Councilman Sanger, do you have a question?
So tomorrow.
I'm just clarifying.
Tomorrow, which one is? But we're going to do the best I can, we're going to do the best I can, so. Like I said, I'll let you know, we'll just kind of see how the health thing lays out. I figure after kids get back to school, it might be better.
Right.
Then I can actually go to school, see if they're okay with the band coming, and I have to make sure I call, put a call for all schools.
Right.
And then try to deal with ribbon cutting, and then I'll definitely invite all you to sample there. So when I did the one in Riverton, I did, and I didn't do any interviews with the radio or nothing, I had two eighteen-year bakers there. They did all the interviews, because they're the ones that's made it run, because one Riverton has been there for fifty years, so I've only had it for five, so. But those two ladies have kept it going, they're very amazing ladies, so. Going to try to bring them here for this. One of those Native American lady, and the other lady, they both started at the same time. So they will be here for grand opening, for sure. Thank you. All right, appreciate you folks.
Thank you.
Two more weeks.
All right, do we have anybody else from the public that would like to come up and speak? We'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on down to council reports. First thing we have is Board of Adjustments. We do have a meeting this Thursday for election of new officers here at City Hall at 5:30. Next item is Cog, which is myself. We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, but it has been canceled, canceled due to the illness that's floating around. We'll move on down to Item C, DDA Main Street, Councilman Smith?
We had a meeting scheduled for yesterday, or Monday at four o'clock, and we, because of the governor's proclamation and advisory, we are going to a telephonic meeting tomorrow night, which is Wednesday, so I'll have something reported next time around.
Okay. Now we'll move on down to Rawlins Planning Commission, Councilman Espinoza, but he's not here. We'll move on down to Urban Systems, Councilman Sanger?
Nothing new to report.
We'll move on down to the approval of the March 3rd, 2020 regular minutes. Councilman Martinez?
We're going to make a motion that we approve the minutes of March 3rd, if there's any, if there's no additions or corrections.
A second.
We have a first and a second. There's no objections to that motion. Jerry, would you open online voting, please? If you cough again, you're going to have to leave.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with five minutes, as Mayor Nicholson abstained.
Okay, thank you. Move on down to Correspondence Reports, the first one is the Department of Murphy Reports. Anybody have any questions or remarks about that? Item B, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities Resolution Consideration for 2020 Summer Convention. Marla? I'm sure you're on top of this one.
So Honorable Mayor and City Council, after our last meeting two weeks ago, I did some research, and I pulled out resolutions that the Rawlins City Council has submitted since 2008. And I did send you all those resolutions, you can see that there are a few of them that are entitled the same that we've sent through. I'm not sure we've been successful in some of those repeat ones, but I'm just asking for your interest in if you, as a city council, want to submit something to WAM for the June conference. So that's really all, that's why it's on here.
We have to, what, April?
April 6th.
Yeah. Actually, I think they're due the Monday before your next council meeting. So, and we can bring them up before the next council meeting, I can ask Erla at the WAM office if she'll take them late. She's allowed us to do that in the past, but yeah, we're there.
Okay. So yeah, if you guys have any resolutions that you'd like to see, let's get them to Marla.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one thing, these resolutions, Marla, if you can correct me, that they're kind of a guide for the WAM when they take and address the legislature. So if you have some ideas how you think your state ought to be running, writing a resolution doesn't hurt, and maybe you'll get to the floor and get to the legislature.
All right, what these resolutions will do for the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, they take all the resolutions submitted to them from all the communities from around the state, and then at the business meeting, at the summer convention, there's a voting delegate, and every single resolution will be brought before the voting delegate, and it kind of, it gives them a guide on what to lobby during next year's legislature.
Okay. Thank you, Marla. Now we'll move on down to the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, Councilwoman Smith?
I move that we approve the agenda as written for March 17, 2020, excuse me.
Councilwoman Wells? Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions in regards to the agenda? Sherri, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six eight.
Thank you, Sherri. Move on down to unfinished business. Item A, an ordinance, second reading, amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title 19. Danielle?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, so this is second reading. From the first reading, the only thing that has been changed is on page 143, the date for the grandfathered uses is May 15, 1989. Otherwise, there's been no additional changes from the last several times we've talked about this, but I'd be more than happy to address or talk about anything that concerns or questions you guys have.
Okay. Hold on one minute, ma'am, go ahead. Aaron?
I was just going to move to approve a second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rawlins, please, Title 19, so.
Do we have a second? Councilwoman Wells, second, okay. Now we can open up to questions. Ma'am, do you have a question?
Yeah, can I get a printed copy of the proposed changes?
Yes, I can print that for you if you want to stop by my office.
Okay.
Whatever's convenient for you.
Okay, is there another reading of it?
There will be a third reading at the next meeting, yes. Thank you.
Any questions for Danielle, or anybody in the audience have any questions? Councilman Martinez?
I don't have a question, I was getting ready to, there was a first and a second, and I was going to make a motion that's... That's the right way to go right now.
Well, there's already been a...
A first and a second, so I'm going to entertain a motion that we amend Section 19.27.050, section L, letter L, garages on private property. So my thinking is, I think that folks ought to be able to build a garage on a private lot, providing they have, they meet the setbacks, height, height regulations and the setbacks, and that they have a permit in regard to building a house on that property, that we don't set a date on how long it's going to take to build that house, but they have to have a permit, and the building that they're going to put ahead of the garage, or with the garage, has to meet the setbacks also, and that they have to petition the neighborhood to see if it's something that would fit in their neighborhood. That would be my motion.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask for some clarification?
Yes, you can.
No, I know, I want to get to the right section here first, too. So first, are you, you're saying petition the neighborhood, are you wanting like a special use permit, because that would require them to petition the neighborhood, or are you looking for just something completely?
Well, it would be the same, same thing, but it would be in this particular Title 19. What that does is I have areas in my community, I know two for sure, two right off the bat that are properties that can't be used for anything else but a garage. You can't put a house on it, you can't put anything on it. So these people can't use that property, that's one call that I got. Another one wanted to build a garage first, and I told them, well, I'm just guessing that if they applied to do that now, they can argue that they had the permit before we passed the ordinance.
Okay.
But anyway, I said to him that there's some things that he could do if he tried to get it done, he could take it before the planning commission, of course, they denied it, he could come before the council and argue his point why he should, but I'd like to just see it in the ordinance because different areas, the aesthetics of the area, it wouldn't change if anything, it would help of certain areas, and then there are certain places that it wouldn't help.
Okay. So my second question to that is, your motion was for 1927, which is the residential mobile home zone, which for the most part is the south side. is the residential mobile home zone, which for the most part is the south side of Rawlins is zoned that. However, I would just like clarification, did you want that intended for all residential zones or specifically mobile home?
No, I was talking about vacant lots, and I thought that was a section that I read today.
So you are in the correct section for residential mobile home, but if you wanted to...
Not mobile home.
If you wanted to...
Accessory buildings. We're talking about garages on private lots. Is that...
Right, I understand that, but residential zones are actually talked about in nineteen point two five six, two six, two seven, two eight. So I'm just wondering if you would wanna include all, so that would encompass the city as a whole rather than one specific residential zoning density?
Okay. Yeah, I would probably, I, I, I would go ahead and say it would be for the entire city. But I don't think that, I don't think it would fly in some areas, because you have to petition the neighborhood, and I'm sure that there are neighbors that wouldn't allow, wouldn't wanna a garage.
The point is you wanna be able to build a garage though.
Build, be able to build a garage on private lots.
Okay, so, yeah, let's get back to what the motion needs to read and make sure it's to the right section.
Well, I thought that was the right section, but I guess I would...
It, it is, not the wrong section. I think you need to include more than just that. So in all of these sections, it is item L, and I'm trying to scroll and verify. So you would want to include nineteen point two three point oh five oh L, nineteen point two four oh five oh L, nineteen point two five oh five oh L, nineteen point, I'm gonna mess this up.
I see what you're saying.
Point two five six?
So if you want the citywide, then...
Include all those sections.
You'd have to include all those sessions in your motion.
And that's what, that's what it'll be.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, sorry for the confusion.
Mayor, point of order for purpose of discussion, I will second the motion.
So we have a first and a second? So do we have...
So this is actually an amendment on the original motion.
And, and I'm, it's through nineteen point two eight, just to clarify. So nineteen point two three through nineteen point...
Two eight.
Too many numbers.
Oh five oh, Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Martinez?
Mister Mayor, the, the only thing that it's changing, one is it's, it's basically what you had down, other than it allows a person to build it, a garage on a private piece of property, and it doesn't put a date as to how long it should take for them to build a house. It doesn't say six months. Get a permit and then have to build it within six months. What it does do is that it allows the neighborhood to get involved, and if they don't think that that's proper usage, that neighborhood, they can not sign this, they cannot sign or waive it. So that, that was a reason, one of the things that I had in there that I thought, is all the setbacks and everything would be the same that you worked on.
So Councilwoman Martinez, so does that mean that they would still have to build a house at some point in time?
Yes, they would. Or if they sold that property to somebody, say they used that garage as long as they were the owner of that property, but if they sold it, it would be a permit, you'd have to have a permit on there to show that they could build a house, that meets the setbacks.
Basically, it's changing the, the original to allow them to build a garage without a house, with no set time to build a house.
Right. Right.
Makes sense? Everybody understand that?
Could I ask them?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this is also in those, on those lots where mobile homes are, you could build a garage and have a mobile home?
This would be all residential lots.
Just all residential lots? So it doesn't distinguish between mobile homes and...
Right, and that's what I was trying to clarify with my second question. I just wanted to make sure that that was the intent for all residential.
So I can see building a garage and then moving a modular on and setting it down later, or, you know, building a garage and then having somebody rent that lot.
But they have to get a permit.
Right now, it says it would, they would have to within the six months, yes. And ultimately, this is your decision, but I feel like it is my job to tell you guys that I do think, feel strongly that that is against the whole purpose of zoning. Our residential zones, the primary purpose is for residential living. So I mean, granted, I'll follow the direction you guys tell me to go, but I do think that kind of goes against the purpose of zoning.
I counted them to date. Eight garages that were built prior to us making these changes. We had the Title Nineteen, and then we allowed, allowed to build garages, different heights, some bigger than the houses. I agree with everything you did, 'cause I think that's the way to go, but we didn't have that in there before, we didn't have any, we allowed them to do it. I can take you where the...
I'd be more than happy to look at any property, and I've said that...
Okay, I can show you the house, the garages are larger, I own the property, I sold the money, sold the house, and the guy built the garage in the back, it's larger than the
And are they attached, or are they detached?
They're detached.
Okay.
Yeah, detached. But anyway, I'm just saying that I think that if a person has a, a lot, he, he's able to use it for something, providing he gets, he, he meets all the requirements that you put out, plus the fact that he has to get permission from the neighborhood to see if it meets the aesthetics of the, of the area.
Again, I will do whatever this council, what you guys want. I just feel like, as a staff, it's my job to tell you, you know, how I feel about that and what I...
And I feel that I have a responsibility to bring this up, because I have constituents that have asked me about it. I don't have a piece of property that it affects at all, so it doesn't bother me at all, but I wanted to bring that up, I told them that I would.
Okay. Is there any other questions, DeVore, on that matter?
Well, I just have one more quick question. And maybe, you know, we talked about a few things during the... So I thought we had decided to not include the language about the main building being completed within six months, and it was just, the house had to be there first. I thought we had removed that.
We did talk about that at one point, and it went back and forth, and it ended up being that you guys were going to maybe talk about that later, but I never did get official direction to remove that. But you are correct that that was something that we had discussed.
That might be something else to just think about for a minute.
But, and you're saying just to remove this?
Yeah, I, I just thought I remembered that what we had, I thought we had decided the direction would say just...
Yeah, and at one point, you guys did, at one point, you guys did say that, and then you backtracked a little bit. Yeah, and then at that point, it never became official again, in my memory.
Any, any other questions in regards to DeVore's motion? Okay. Jerry, would you bring DeVore's motion up for vote, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion fails with four nays. Councilmember Wells, going nay. Smith, nay. Martinez, yay. Durst, nay. Singer, nay. Nicholson, yay.
So that failed, so now we'll go back to the original motion.
I was just asking, I was...
Correct. If we have no questions in regards to the original motion, Jerry, would you open online voting for that?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yates.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
Now I'll move on down to new business, approval of the payroll. Councilman Durst?
I'm moved to, well, register, with a pay period ending February sixteen, twenty twenty, February nine, twenty ninth, twenty twenty, for two hundred and eight thousand ninety three dollars and sixty cents.
Second bid? Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions in regards to that motion? Jerry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yates.
Thank you, Jerry. Now I'll move on down to the approval of accounts payable. Councilwoman Smith?
Okay, I move to approve the accounts payable registered for the period of February twenty ninth, twenty twenty, March thirteen, twenty twenty, and the amount, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
We have a first and a second. Any questions in regards to that motion? Jerry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yates.
Okay. We'll move on down to item C, a resolution, final approval of the COR slash BO CCC and Memorial Hospital of Carbon County land trade. Councilman, Councilman Singer?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing a land trade between the City of Rawlins, the Board of Carbon County Commissioners, and Memorial Hospital of Carbon County, and authorize Mayor Nicholson to execute any legal instruments to effectuate this land trade.
Second? Councilman Martinez, second sec?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to present this joint resolution on behalf of Carbon County as well as Memorial Hospital of Carbon County by and through its Board of Carbon County, sorry, Board of Trustees of Memorial Hospital of Carbon County. While I have not been instrumental from the beginning in this process, it has been a pleasure to be called into it in the eleventh hour and see it through its completion. My sincerest thanks and appreciation to the hospital for their patience and kindness as, as this process took longer than we should have. Along those lines, for your information, Wyoming Statute fifteen one one oh three provides you the statutory authority for governance of all real property. It provides that governing bodies of all cities may purchase and hold real property and personal property for their use, including real estate sold for taxes. You have the authority to sell, convey, lease any estate owned and make any orders respecting it deemed to be in the best interest of the city. And finally, you have the right to perform all acts in relation to the property and concerns of the city necessary to the exercise of its corporate powers. A fifteen one 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 twelve B specifically provides the procedures in which the council can dispose of municipal property that has a value of five hundred dollars or more. As reflected in the public notice and the attached appraisals, all three parcels are, are worth more than five hundred dollars, and they're subject to that, those procedures. In this instance, there is a united resolution coming forward in that each of the public entities has determined that their respective properties no longer serves a public purpose for their entity, and they've determined based upon a desire to obtain the most beneficial public use for each subject property, that they recommend approval of this. It's in the best interest of all three properties. We did have a public hearing earlier tonight to satisfy that requirement. We have attached the appraised values of all three properties, and the final piece would be your approval tonight. At this time, I would open the floor to Memorial Hospital of Carbon County CEO Ken Harmon, Rod Whackerland, and Sherid France, if they wanna make any comments or statements in support of this. They've been with it since the...
Ken Harmon, CEO of Memorial Hospital of Carbon County, we certainly appreciate the work that has begun in and are looking forward to having this done, so we are very much in favor of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you guys have any questions? Jerry, could you open online voting, please? Trying to think if we had a motion yet. I brought that.
Mine came through twice.
Mine did, too.
Well, online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yates.
Okay. She has validated your vote and then...
Save it for next time.
Jerry with twelve please.
And can we have a picture before you move?
Rod Whackerland, President of Board of Trustees, Memorial Hospital, I just wanna reach out and tell you all thank you. I think this is a win-win for our community. It's a win-win for the hospital. We're really working hard to progress to be a bigger and better facility than we have in the past. Thank you all very much for your time, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
You wanna have them stand in front of us, or us come around there?
Whatever you prefer, Mayor.
You're, you're in charge, you're, however you, why you make your decisions. Let's everybody come around the front, so we can, we can have you guys... It's a joint venture, it's good to have you guys here.
These have wheels on them.
There you go. See, I'm always driving, but everybody know that.
All right, everybody, just look here and grin and bear it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we'll move on down to item D, a resolution authorizing the sale of municipal property located near Airport Road with... Rescat findings? Records, findings, sorry. Councilwoman, Buzz?
I move to authorize the sale of municipal property located near Airport Road after finding the municipal property does not currently or in the foreseeable future serve a municipal purpose, and authorize city staff to advertise the sale pursuant to Wyoming State Statute fifteen one one twelve A.
We have a first and a second. Dustin, do you have anything to add to that?
Honorable Mayor and Council, earlier in the evening, during work session, we just discussed Antelope Flats. This is a piece of property that's located in that similar vicinity, but it is not actually a part of Antelope Flats. It is located...
I'm gonna have to show you when the video is. On there, it's one whole thing, so...
Okay. And in, in the appraisal, it actually does show this piece. There's a drainage ditch up Airport Road.
That's the one right next to it.
So everybody, good with where we're at? So this is a piece of property that there's no municipal use for at this time. The piece below that, which is the drainage ditch, is something we wanna retain control of, because that does have municipal use, and we wanna make sure we, we are able to control that, so it would just be that top portion.
Are we gonna be moving forward to advertise or put out a bid, or...
Um, my request would be to do a sealed bid process on this, and we would set the reserve at the minimum amount of the appraisal, to ensure the reserve is met and...
So you're just wanting permission to put this out?
Correct. Close, uh, sealed bid to the public.
Any other questions? Jerry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and motion carries with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Now move on down to item E, a bid award for a wastewater treatment screening unit. Councilwoman Smith?
I move to award the wastewater treatment screening unit to Parks and Corporation in the amount of $49,920.
Second, sir? Councilwoman Martina, second, sir? Danielle?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is the item that we did the budget amendment for when we postponed the fencing to get the screening unit. I am recommending that we award it to the second highest bidder as the lowest bidder. Their screening unit didn't meet our specifications. We have about a 16-foot area to put this in and their unit was 20, just over 21 feet. I did talk to legal about this, make sure we were good. It is about an $800 difference. I don't remember the exact amount, but if you guys have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Any questions for Danielle?
So you're not able to just squish that down a little bit?
I know, I wish. Need more space, or we don't, I don't know. I mean, it's not really fun cleaning 16 feet of grit.
Okay, if we have no further questions, then Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and motion carries with six yeas.
I'll move on down to...
I shouldn't have just stated, I forgot I was next.
Item F, ordinance first reading amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title 2.20. Councilwoman Singer?
I move to approve on first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title 2.20 Planning and Zoning Commission.
Councilwoman Drish, second, sir? Go ahead, Danielle.
So I promised you guys this would be coming back after we had discussed the bylaw amendments for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is just to match what the bylaws say where we will meet once a quarter or more if needed, but minimum. This, I did get Tom Thompson to review these with us as well since he is special counsel for planning. And this, I guess if you have questions, let me know.
Any questions?
This is just the finalized bylaws.
You approved the bylaws, this is the ordinance, and I wanted the ordinance to match the bylaws.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Wrong words.
No, you're good, you're good. I just want to make sure.
Okay, sorry. Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Bylaws, anything to do with a member of the city council sitting on that, on commission? Question came up as it actually, a person has two votes. They vote on issues that the planning council discuss. They come back and sit here, then they vote on it again to okay it.
You do have a city council member that serves on that board and they do vote at the commission?
Is that part of the bylaws, the fact that the city council member gets to vote? See what I'm saying? Instead of being a, a...
Ex-official.
Yeah, an ex-official member of the board, he sits in the meetings, discusses the problem, but he doesn't actually have a vote.
I'd have to refer to the bylaws and see exactly what it says.
I don't think it says anything in there about that, Devaree.
Yeah, but I don't...
The question that was asked, it's kind of, never really thought about it, but kind of right. We have other boards in the same situation, they get actually two votes, both have their board meeting. I'm sure they're doing the right thing. I don't fancy...
Yeah, and I, the three boards that I deal with, there is a council member on each of those boards and they do vote at both the board meeting and here.
I just wondered.
Yeah, I can look at that and I can send you a follow-up email letting you know what I find in the bylaws on that. I just don't want to tell you wrong. I'd have to, I don't, I have to double check them.
Any other questions for Danielle? Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Okay, I am done this time. Thank you. Online voting is closed and motion carries with six yeas.
We'll move on down to item G, a resolution amending fiscal year 2019 slash 2020 pay plan. You get a motion? Councilman Singer?
I move to amend and approve the fiscal year 2019/2020 pay plan as presented.
Councilwoman Wells, seconds. Dustin, please explain.
Honorable Mayor and Council, over the last couple of months, I have spent a significant amount of time analyzing a lot of different things we as a city do. Procedurally, different things like that. And also analyzing our current pay plan on holes that we have in it. I've identified a few positions that I feel are critical for us to move forward in a more positive manner. And I believe these positions need to be amended currently in the current fiscal year because of the severity of what we're dealing with here. We will be approving this pay plan as a part of the standard budget in a few months, but I feel these are critical enough that they needed to be addressed prior to that happening. The positions that I'm asking about are a human resource specialist. At this time, all human resource issues go directly to the city manager. There is no other individual that deals with it and I have great concerns about that beings I'm the one sitting in that chair. You put me at risk, you put this council at risk, and you do not give the employees a proper voice. If there is something that is not addressed properly by a manager, it is on my shoulders and I don't feel that's fair to me and I don't feel that's fair to our employees. We need to have this other person there where there is a chain of command to be followed. And there's also another individual involved in this process. So if I am not handling things properly, there is a third person involved in this beyond me and the employee. That protects myself and it protects the employee and it protects this council. I feel very strongly about this one, again, because I feel I am personally at risk in this situation because of what we're doing here. The next piece is a community relations coordinator. This was never so evident as a needed position in my eyes until this week. We are dealing with a great situation in this community and I and my staff killed ourselves trying to get all of the information together related to this virus, get a response together and do so as thoroughly as we possibly could while trying to manage a website, social media accounts, and getting all this information channeled out to the public in a unified manner. This position is one person we can go to to manage all of these processes and make sure that message we're presenting to the public and to our council is unified. It's no issues. The next piece of the puzzle is to split the golf course and green space superintendent position to a golf course superintendent and a green space superintendent individually. I do not feel our green spaces get the attention they need. They could be one of our greatest assets and I don't think we treat them that way. This would allow our current green space superintendent or green golf space superintendent to focus solely on that and have an individual that focuses solely on the golf course. I believe it will make all of our green spaces that much better. The last position is I would like to add a green space technician to assist there. I do not feel we have the manpower there to handle the quantity of parks and green space areas that we throw on them. We continue to add all of these pieces to the puzzle, but we never give them more help. And that, I believe, is another piece of what is causing this deterioration of our green spaces and our green belts. I will open the floor to council for questions.
Any questions for Dustin? Councilwoman Martina, go ahead.
The only question I have, like communications person, is that a full-time position? When we're not facing the crisis that we're facing today, what else will that person be, how's that?
So this would be a position that would be a centralized place for all of our media contacts to go to. I would have them manage all of our social media accounts across the city to ensure consistent message out to everyone from all directions. They would work with the departments related to their social media feeds to ensure that the information they need is getting out there. I would also have them manage our YouTube page, so that would be one more thing I can take off of my list to do. And I would also have them assist with the city website and slowly take that away from our clerk's office. Again, if all of this data comes into one location, we can have them manage this whole pile of things we're all trying to individually do. Again, and it'll keep a unified front and a consistent message out to our public and there will be one point of contact for our public on issues that come up. And then they can relay it back to me for things that I need to, or disperse it to the department heads as needed. It just, I, and I've apologized to Callie and Ray on multiple occasions in the last two much, two months, I'm sorry, because they've requested something from me or they needed to talk to me about something and I don't see the email. When you got a ton of them in your email box, sometimes they get missed. If I have this person that can coordinate all of these things going on, they can make sure all of our information is getting on our website in a timely manner. They can get our social media accounts and get all the information out the right way and quickly. It just helps us.
Does this mean that a resident would come directly to that person versus coming to your office? So they would actually kind of be bypassing you and she, she or he would feed that information to you?
And not necessarily me. For example, if, if an individual has a question about water services, they can get that information directly to our Public Works area. Or if there's a street issue, they can get that directly to our Streets Department. And again, it adds a level of accountability on our end because we have another person seeing this information and they can follow up then with our various departments, whether it's me or the other departments. And they can do follow-up off of that to ensure these questions are getting answered and what citizens need are getting taken care of a little quicker.
Councilwoman Wells?
Would they be able to also monitor the Facebook, can they ensure that comments coming in on some various news sites we could respond to in a appropriate, timely manner?
My belief is we don't respond to Facebook comments. Now, if they see a Facebook comment, that is something that needs address, we can get it funneled to the correct department and we can look into the issue.
Make some kind of press release in response to it.
Depending on the nature of it. If somebody has an issue on one of our Facebook accounts about a big pothole, they can funnel it directly over to Public Works, Public Works can just deal with it. I don't want to get into a war of responding on Facebook, so that's not going to change. But we will be able to see better...
If it's a trend that you're seeing?
If there's multiple comments about the same issue, they can, they can see that trend and get it to the departments to get it addressed. Where all of the rest of us don't have the time to monitor that closely.
Would they monitor all complaints then too as well?
Most likely.
In electronic fashion?
So, so right now, individuals normally call and I know a lot of them go to our clerk's office and they funnel them to the departments and they funnel them to me and we do our best to respond as quickly as we can. So this would just give one central point of contact to be able to handle all those things.
There's also a link on our website, it's called Report a Concern and it's built into the website that they select a department that their concern falls under and it emails to that department.
You guys get a lot through that?
I, I don't know that we get a lot anymore. We, we used to get a lot when we first, first started it in 2005 or 2006. But I don't, it, we do get some, but I don't think we get a lot.
Councilwoman Smith, go ahead.
How many of these are out and out new positions? All four of them or, I thought we had a green space guy and a golf guy.
That was split previously. This is to make it official in our pay plan that way.
They're already doing that. They're funded at this time.
So there are three of them. The additional green space technician, HR, and community relations are all brand new positions. Green space is an addition, it's already a created position, it's an additional within that position.
We're just catching up with that.
You're actually creating two, you're taking one position and you're creating, you're, you're ratifying what was already done where it was split into two full-time positions.
I would like to, that I don't have an issue with, but my concern in getting a community relations coordinator is that we're still a small enough community. This community expects to hear from its officials and its departments directly. And lots of times, there's legal issues too that can't be talked about. So I'm kind of nervous about opening that up. I think that we needed, you know, we had someone doing a little bit of marketing for us and that was a very positive thing. And you discussed it at one point, we had some kind of program on that was talking about all the good features of Rawlins. But when it comes down to calling in and talking to someone about their water and they want to go to people who can solve their problems, they don't want to hear from somebody that's just going to talk to them about a press release, I guess.
Well, I think that that's kind of the purpose. That person will, will take that call and direct them to the proper person instead of giving their complaint to the clerk or the girls at the water department, actually getting it to Public Works, the person that's actually on the ground. It actually funnels it.
And, and that's the intent of this would be to have one centralized person to go to for them to get it out and reach to the department heads. Because that person can email Danielle, but if Danielle's on vacation, that doesn't do any good. It's not going to be responded to until she gets back. If we have this person, they're going to know Danielle's on vacation. Hey, Ariel, I need an answer to this. It's going to allow us to be more efficient in getting responses to our customers.
And if that person is on vacation, then you just handle it, right?
Well, we would have an email set up for this person. We would have somebody to monitor it while they're gone. We would have to.
Have you run the numbers on all the additional total, how much would add to the bottom line in payroll?
And I don't have it on me. It's, and it's one of those things I've been calculating into the budget if we were to go this direction and this does not break our budget. I mean, we're still comfortable with a new budget doing this.
And you are addressing some of the other, I forgot what we called it, compressions in the other places or?
That was done prior to that meeting. And we are taking other steps to create what I feel is a fairer playing field with regards to that. And myself and the police department are working on that.
In this current time, do you think it's prudent to add additional staffers? I know the human resources, but can I just say this from a, I'm going to put my LGLP hat on. We're seeing the personnel matters go more and more on a federal complaint type of situation, which means you no longer are under that $250,000 cap, it becomes a million dollars under federal law. And therefore, human resources person will pay for itself in one year.
I agree. And, and like I said, I'm at risk. This, this position's at risk because of this. I have never seen an entity with this many employees not have a true HR person in place. It boggles my mind. Go anywhere in this country and look at any place with the number of employees we have, they have at least one HR person, most of the times more. Because I'll be the first to admit, HR is not my bread and butter. I'm a finance guy.
It usually is when you're really good in all the others, HR is one that hangs out, you know?
See, I just want to, I just want to make sure I understand, this is, an approval of this tonight would be an approval of these job positions, is that correct? We would add them, you would immediately start hiring and that's, I mean, that's the point of this, is to authorize these positions and move... Like we would add them, you would immediately start hiring and that's, I mean, that's the point of this is to authorize these positions and move forward, correct?
Correct, I can then begin hiring at my discretion. It would be effective now.
Do we have that in the budget?
Because some of these, some of this is like, if I remember this from our conversation, is to be prepared because by the time we get through the budget and to get to that point, we're already halfway through the summer, the summer season. So by then we, when we need this help, we're past that point. So being able to do it now, we can get started on it, get these positions onboard now to be better prepared before.
I guess I'm pretty okay with it, I have some concerns about a full-time communications person.
I am too. Just thinking about it, this community, community relations coordinator, I'm not so sure how it's going to work. I'm, I'm willing to take a shot at it, but I'd like to see it done, start out like a probationary thing and see how it's going to work. If it doesn't work, we can always go back. The other ones, I agree, 100%, don't have a problem. A coordinator is a new thing and I'm kind of concerned like Linda was saying, that residents are able to get through the way they're supposed to.
I think there's concerns everywhere and I, and I agree with some of your concerns. I look at, you know, in today's world, we're so much media-driven. And so many people, I mean, look at our, our room here tonight, you know, I bet we probably got 170, 200 people watching us live. You know, people make comments on our social media. I think it allows us a person to, to monitor that, to get those comments. They can look at that and see what comments are that people are saying all the time that we don't comment on because we don't want to get into an argument on Facebook. But they can bring that situation forward to Dustin or whichever department that it may be concerning. And we can hopefully address those better than what they're being addressed. Because there's numerous times you see in a little chat where they're complaining about a certain area of town, a certain area, a certain area, a certain area. Well, is it just staying in that little feed there, is it really getting to the proper department to actually go out and look at that and address the situation? And I think this will help us do that.
So what's the council's role? Why are we here then?
Well, these are like, like potholes when they're complaining that there's a pothole on the corner of such and such and 20 people comment on that on Facebook.
And we tell them to call a department that can solve the problem.
But that's if we see it or they email us. If we don't see it, they just keep talking about it, people keep building up on it and it doesn't get addressed.
So, I, I'm not sure if any of you guys watch K2 News in the morning. I get up first thing in the morning, I watch, I drink my coffee, watch the news. There is a young lady, and I don't know if I should probably say her name, but Rebecca Lab with the Casper Police Department, she's a public information officer. When there's an issue, she goes to the press and she is interviewed, she gives the detail. She has the knowledge base of what can be said and what can't be said. That's what we're building here because, I'm going to be real honest. You look at these, you're, you're asking this position to handle HR, handle every personnel issue, handle all community relations, plus come up with these projects, plus work with every department head to do. Again, I'm working 60 to 100 hour weeks right now, killing myself when we can utilize tools. And what's going to happen is you're going to see a level of efficiency because I'm not an HR guru. I actually have to spend a lot of time researching, speaking with our city attorney. We can get that person in place, that's their expertise. They find, they get the issue, they bring the relevant data to me. You've got community relations people, that's their bread and butter. I'm not a specialist on, on all of those things. We're trying to put the professionals in place to get this running efficiently is the big thing.
Councilman Smith?
The planning department has also made a request for a planner. I think that's also very important. We have to add another position. Just throwing it out there.
So I, I would ask the, and, and I think that's a direction we need to move. I 100% agree, I just don't think we're there. What land do we have to plan? I, I know we got that one little piece, but where, where are we going exactly? And I think Engineer Smith is trying to put some things together to build the community development and go that direction. It just takes a little time, so.
Councilman Wells?
Another thing that we didn't really mention, but this person could also promote Rawlins, our economic growth. Bring people to our golf course. All those things that our staff don't even have time to even think about.
I agree, I think it would be a multi-role position. You know, just speaking with the public, there's, there's a disconnect between local government and citizens. This is one proactive step to try and address that and build that bridge. And it doesn't necessarily always have to be a response to a complaint or an issue. They can get out in front of issues that are coming, present facts and circumstances. And the real issue from a legal perspective is the amount of liability on social media. And we have, you know, how many social media accounts? And staff's doing a really good job, but it would be easier to have one person focused on, that is their job. They read it with the idea of, is this going to cause more liability for the city of Rawlins, is it not? Whereas other staff members are just struggling to get their, what's on their plate done. And they're not necessarily making those decisions, you know, is this a potential liability? The issue with the planner is something definitely that the council has to weigh and determine what's of more importance at this time. And I feel for interim city manager, Ms. Evil, because this is not the best time to come to you for a request for additional positions. But unfortunately, I think in the position that he's been in, he's, he's identified a number of issues and that this would help move the city forward in a positive manner.
Any other questions?
I guess I, again, I, I don't, I, I agree with the need for this. I mean, you really, I mean, like this, this communications person, I mean, you honestly believe, I don't mean this as an attack, I mean, this is an honest question.
These are questions.
You feel like there's enough to keep that person actively, actively busy and always productive and there's enough of these. There's enough on your plate to take off and all of that, I mean. Is that, because I think that's, that's the argument is, not necessarily is the position needed, but is it better to maybe look at a different position being filled than this one in six months? Do you see where I'm going with that?
Oh, yes.
Not, not an argument of whether it's needed, but.
I'll be real honest, I could probably fill two of their positions full-time. We are fighting that many issues on a daily basis. We are trying, so, I'm trying to explain this, I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way to, to.
Make it tangible.
Yeah, so for example, a few weeks ago, I spent some time with Hallie O'Hare. I had Danielle working on special project to get information out about potholes. Sounds very simple, there's a hole in the street, you put stuff in it and move on. It's not that simple. Certain things we do have to be a certain temperature. Certain things we do have to be a certain level of moisture that can't be there if it's freezing. Or we can do sand and gravel, or we just leave it alone. There are so many factors that go into this and I had Danielle trying to put this all together and get it out to the public. The biggest issue we have right now is, we're not educating the public on issues as they come up. I do not expect my public to know the inner workings of Hot Mix. That's what we pay those street guys for. I don't expect the public to understand to the fullest extent why certain streets are more important. But if we can get the information to them and explain why, we can educate them going forward. I want the public to be on the same page as all of us, that's my main goal. As I've told you guys on multiple occasions, we got two major provinces, communication and coordination in this town. You guys can argue with me that I'm wrong, I'm never going to concede that. Communicating with our public is a top priority to me. I've been trying to do that since I started. Communication with our council, getting you guys the information you need to make the best decision you possibly can. I don't always succeed at that, but I'm trying my very best. This person can focus that in and open up all those channels that have been shut down over the years. That's where we're at. So, do I have enough to keep them busy full-time? Oh, yeah, plenty. Because we do need to do better work on our website. I don't think our website is to the point it should be. I think there are so many things and, and City Clerk Brown can, can verify this, we've had this conversation. There are pieces of that website we're not using to the fullest extent. It's not because we don't want to, it's because we don't have the time. Is that a fair statement? We're, we're not using all our capabilities to the fullest extent. And, and what I'm trying to do is enhance the experience of the public, the staff and the council. And get us all going in one direction and make sure they have all the information they need. Because I, I feel like a lot of these complaints that we get from the public isn't anything more than lack of communication or miscommunication. We have way too much of that. And, and I want our public to know what we're doing. They have every right to know what we're doing, this is their money we're spending. And I want to make sure when we're using their money, they know why we're doing it. They may not always agree with the decisions we make, I'll be the first to say it. But sometimes we do have to make tough decisions. And when we explain why we're doing these things and get them on the same page in the direction we're going, that's why we got the goals. I want to know what the direction that you guys want of this city. And if we can explain to this city, these are the directions we're going, this is why we're doing these projects, et cetera, et cetera. I think you're going to see a more positive experience from our public because they're a part of this now. They're not just giving us money, they're a part of this. And they know what's going on and all of those things, so that's where I'm going with this.
And we still feel comfortable with all the rest of the budget as far as.
So.
I know you've been working on it, I get that.
Yeah.
The compression issues, it was with the, I mean, you're still comfortable that this isn't going to turn into a, well, if we hadn't done this, the rest of this. You, you see where this conversation is.
So, so in the current year budget, I'm going to be, I'm going to be 100% honest with you. I don't know if those first two positions I can even get hired by the fiscal year. Because it's going to be a complicated manner to find the right candidate. We need the right candidate, I'm not just hiring anybody. So there's a high likelihood it will be after the current budget anyway. With the current situation with individuals leaving and rehiring, there are gaps in the budget that we have every year. And I feel that hiring these right now will be covered in those. If we have to make a slight adjustment from one area to another that has those gaps, we'll be fine. But overall, I think our budget will still be strong in fiscal '21 with these positions in them.
Councilman Smith?
We're what, six months away from hiring a new city manager, filling that position with someone that we choose? Is that correct? I've always felt that it was important for a new city manager to have kind of people around him that he can make an organization work in the direction for which we've hired him. I'm not sure that's fair, hire people and fill all these positions and then hire a city manager. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, that's just the way I think, I guess.
And, and if that, if that's.
But I know we have to put positions in a budget because we have to pass a budget.
And that's a council's, that's a council's disclosure. Or, I'm sorry, not discretion. If you guys aren't ready to move on this, that's okay. But I am going to throw it forward. I, I'm not going to sit back. If you guys decide that we're not ready for this, that's okay. I'm not saying, I'm not going to get upset and all that other stuff. I don't want you to think that, these are needs I feel we have. If you guys aren't ready to pull that trigger, you want to wait for the new city manager to make these changes, that's okay. I'm just throwing out there what my feelings are on this.
We already have two people onboard already, we better be putting it in some kind of legal position so that we can support what they're already doing. That's why I would vote for it, but I'm a little bit nervous about stacking the deck against a new city manager.
You know, with that, I understand where you're coming from and I kind of look at the other side of that. I think it's nice to have a well-oiled will, so when the new city manager comes in, he's able just to sit back and assess it and then move forward, not have to immediately from day one try to fill holes and try to figure stuff out. This way, if things are working, and then he can decide how well it's working and make changes it needs to be. But if he has to walk in day one and start filling positions without really understanding that position, in reality, he should be in that position six months to a year before he even understands if that position he's filled or not. I mean, it's both sides, I understand exactly where you're coming from, but I'd like to give the city manager a nice full little slate here and say, here's what we got, here's how it's working and.
And I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest, me going from the situation I was in to what I'm in now, I wish these were in place. It would have made my transition into this city significantly easier. That's just my opinion. Because I'm starting from scratch and having to figure out what the HR issues are, what these new ones are causing. Where if I had this person in place that was already just sliding through and doing the job and they could fill me in and get me moving along much faster, that would have been a great option to have. So, and I think a new city manager. I won't speak for a new city, I'm just going to say what my opinion was, let me say it that way.
Any other questions? That's all, same question, okay. Sherry, would you open online voting please?
Online voting is closed and motion carries with six shakes.
Thank you, Sherry. Now we'll move on down to item 10, executive session, can you get a motion?
Want to read the whole thing this time?
You want me to?
Councilwoman Smith?
Is that a set, or I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Wyoming statute 6044052 to consider the appointment employment, right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person or employee or to hear complaints or charges brought against. Okay, just a minute, I got something on here. Brought against an employee, professional person or officer unless the employee, professional person or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may include permitted public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, meaning that all other witnesses in, in the matter being investigated. While in a hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session. Seven, to consider the selection of a site or the purchase of real estate when the publicity regarding the consideration would cause a likelihood of an increase in price. And nine, to consider receiving information classified by, as confidential by law and the time is 8:51 PM.
If I have a first and a second? Anybody have any questions in regards to that motion? Do we need it read again? Sherry, would you open online voting please?
Online voting is closed and motion carries with six shakes.
Okay, we are in executive session.